I'd like to call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for November 19th, 2018, and the school board.
Yes, this time I'd like to call to order the November 19th meeting of the Bristol, Virginia School Board.
All right, with that, please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Plagues of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we should have a sign up sheet in the back of the room. Make sure if you want to speak during public comment, which will be right after the school board staff report presentation, that you sign up. You'll have a couple of minutes at the podium, so state your name and your address before you get started, and then pay attention to the lights, and so we'll let everybody get through their comments. So with that, the first item on the regular agenda this evening is consider approval of comprehensive agreement between Bristol, Virginia Public Schools and JA Street and Associates Staff Report.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of City Council, Mr. Chairman, members of our school board, it's with great pleasure tonight that I come before you to make one final presentation in regards to the new intermediate school PPA project that we've been working on for some time. You know, I actually have written a couple of op-ed pieces over the last month or so, and I've just not submitted those to the Bristol Herald Courier that shares a lot of the information about why I think that it's important for the future of the city of Bristol to approve this recommendation. We also talked about, you know, coming out in force and having a lot of folks show up to support and speak on behalf of this school, and we decided not to do that as well. And the reason is this: This is a decision that will have an impact, either positive or negative, on future generations of Bristolians, mainly our children. It's a decision that comes with a lot of thought and prayer on behalf of our school board, and I hope it has from the City Council as well. This is a decision that should be made on the merits of the proposal, not on emotion, not on a packed house, not on anything that would cause somebody to make a decision that's outside of looking at the numbers, looking at the plan, and looking at our future. I propose to you that this plan has more merit than any other school construction plan that I've seen, and I'll share those reasons why as we move forward. So let me first start off by just kind of giving you a brief timeline. I think everybody should be familiar with the history. In 2011, our school board commissioned a facility study. A result of that study, we found out that Highland View Elementary School was deemed functionally obsolete, and a couple of our other older schools are not very far behind that. In 2013, our school board made it one of their board goals, they create goals every year, to consolidate from a four elementary school model to a two elementary school model. They started looking at different plans, options, different properties across the city, designs of schools at that point. And I was hired in January 2017, and the charge that our board gave to me as a superintendent was to have a school built for the children of Bristol, Virginia. At that time, it had already been six years since this project first began, and so they felt that the time to move was now. And so we started the process. I didn't think it was possible. I thought my time in Bristol would be short-lived, because I thought they were giving me an impossible task. However, through various conversations, actually Mr. Alvis came to me and said, Keith, the only way this is going to happen is if you find a way to develop a private-public partnership. And, you know, a light bulb went off in my mind when Mr. Alvis said that. We had just had a meeting with some folks from Virginia Beach who had talked about private-public partnerships and how you can build schools in that process. And so that conversation with Mr. Alvis and the conversation that we had with the folks from Virginia Beach led to the plan that we have before you tonight. And so we received an unsolicited bid from that firm in February of 2018. That opened up the door for other teams to submit, and we ended up getting two proposals, and each of those teams paid $10,000 each just for us to review those proposals. September 2018, after a thorough review of both proposals, our school board chose the JA Street team, and that has led us to the point that we are here tonight, where I hope that history will be created in this council's chambers, because we build the first new school that's been built in our city in over four decades. As you know, or most of you know, Mr. Farnham may not be as familiar, but most of you know that City Council has been involved in this process a great deal, maybe more so than you wanted to be involved in this process. I won't read those dates to you, but all those dates there, you can go back and look at the minutes and see that there has been discussions and meetings about this new construction since as early as March of 2017. So there are a lot of concerns that have been raised recently, right here in these chambers, that really are not for City Council to address. The school board has the responsibility to determine the need for consolidation, that's state code, we've done that, to choose the location of the school, our school board has already done that, the size of the building, we've looked at data, and we've developed that, come up with a plan of safety, which we have partially done that, develop traffic patterns, and then also to determine staffing needs and how that will affect employee salaries or raises. None of those things that we mentioned there are decisions for City Council to make, other than possibly traffic patterns on the streets that lead to the school, but not the traffic patterns on the school property. Employee raises, staffing needs, those are school board decisions, and should not be part of your decision-making process tonight. Tonight, City Council will vote to give the school board authority to enter into a comprehensive agreement with JA Street, and that's per the code that you see there in front of you. And actually, if you look at page eight of the comprehensive agreement, it says very specifically, "The city is not a party to this agreement. We're just simply asking for your approval for us to sign this agreement." That's City Council's involvement tonight. One thing that's very important that I do think that we need to touch on, because it has been mentioned multiple times recently, especially since the last time that I met with you, safety has been a preeminent discussion throughout the course of this process. It was talked at at every public hearing, those of you who are there can attest to that. We received and actually implemented some of the suggestions to improve safety at the building from the public hearing. Schools are required by state code to have a full-fledged crisis plan when a school is open. We will have that once this school is approved and construction is done. However, certain details are not disclosed intentionally. We have authority under the state law that you see there to prevent that from happening for obvious reasons, because we certainly don't want to give the bad guys an advantage on knowing how that we would handle a crisis in case it did occur, especially with our evacuation plan. However, as I think I told you in an email, if you're interested in knowing personally as a City Council member what that evacuation plan looks like at this time, I'd be glad to share it, but I will tell you that we do have those plans in place. I'll also remind you about recent philosophies that this council has had about other projects that were not school-related here in the city. The city and folks in and around the city have been encouraged to think big or go home. I'll tell you, this is a big idea. We've also been told to think long-term and not short-term. Building a new school for the first time in four decades is certainly long-term. We're only asking for consent to move forward. That was also a philosophy that was shared with a recent project. We're not asking for any additional money from City Council. This is a game changer, and it'll be a game changer for decades. That's absolutely true of this, as well as other projects in our city. It also has a tremendous impact, a tremendous potential to have a big impact on our local economy. Mr. Farnham can tell you, as a real estate agent, whenever he's selling a home to a family with children, the first question, definitely one of the first questions is, where will my child go to school? If we're sending them to that school that you see on the poster in front of you, that sale is going to go a lot faster than if we tell them that we're going to send them to a building that was built when Franklin Delano Roosevelt was president of the United States, and it also is full of asbestos and moisture issues. We've also been, the philosophy has been, if not this, then what? If not now, then when? If you don't approve this tonight, I can't answer those questions. I don't think there is an answer to those questions if you don't approve this tonight. And then even last week, a comment was made, if you're going to change a charter and you're going to do something with finances, and if you get approval from a rating agency, then you might have something there. Well, you'll see later tonight, we have the blessing of the rating agencies, and so hopefully we have something here with this plan. So, over the course of those many meetings that I shared earlier, myself and our school board were given many tasks, and we'll talk about just a few of those here tonight and give you an update on it. Be creative. Find someone who's actually willing to invest in Bristol under our current financial constraints. Whatever we do, it cannot have an impact on our debt margin. It also cannot have a negative impact on our bond rating. It needs to be budget-neutral. We have to have a plan for the buildings that we'll leave vacant. We also have to consider other costs to the city. We have to consider transportation issues. We have to look for other mechanisms for financing. We've got to make sure that we build a building that's of high quality. Being budget-neutral changed halfway through the process, and we were challenged to make it budget-positive. We were also challenged to determine the cost of renovating our existing school buildings instead of building a new one. We were told that we needed to get a financial analysis by Davenport, who is the financial advisor for the city of Bristol, Virginia. We're also challenged to obtain an opinion from the auditor of public accounts. We also needed to get an opinion from the Attorney General. We also were asked, what if funding were available that wasn't currently available whenever you first made this plan? We also were asked to look at a cash flow analysis. And finally, we were asked if we would consider putting the vote for this school up to a referendum. I will tell you that all of these tasks have been completed, all of these tasks were assigned by City Council. We've delivered on every single one of those tasks, and I'll give you that summary now. Be creative. This financing plan has been used in other government agencies to build other government buildings, but the alternative financing and the PPA process has not been used in the Commonwealth of Virginia to build a new school. This is as creative as a school financing plan, as you will see. As a matter of fact, Montgomery County, who also has some financial constraints, received an unsolicited bid from the same finance company who's offered this finance agreement to us, and they are watching with great interest the results of this outcome tonight. They have actually mimicked our financing plan, or I guess the financier has used the same plan in Montgomery County as they have used here. They have accepted that unsolicited bid. We have also had contact from other school divisions and appropriating bodies from Tennessee and Virginia, who are very interested in this too, because they have some of the same challenges that we have here in the city of Bristol, and this opens up doors that have not previously been available. We're also told that when we first brought this to you, that you will never find anybody who is willing to invest this kind of money in the city of Bristol under our current financial constraints. You're right, we could not find one person to do it, we found two. And so we were able to choose, because of that, we were able to get a better deal than what we initially thought, because there was competition involved. We were told that it could not affect our debt margin, because we have no room left on the debt margin. I don't need to tell you that. So when we asked for these proposals, we asked for the proposals to be sensitive to that, that don't bring us a proposal if it's going to have a negative impact on our debt margin. This plan does not, the Attorney General, I think you've all seen that notification, the Attorney General says it does not have a negative impact on our debt margin, doesn't even impact our legal debt margin. Bond rating, that was also part of the request that we received, that we put out, is that it could not have a negative impact on our bond rating. Davenport, who serves as the city's financial advisor, ran this finance plan up the tree, or up the pole, to Moody's and Standards &amp; Poor, and their summary indicates that this structure should not have a negative impact on our bond rating. We were told that this needed to be a budget-neutral, we shouldn't ask for additional money. We believe that the savings we generate from closing our 1938, 1948, and 1968 buildings will generate the savings we need to make this budget-neutral. And I will say this, and I have not said this enough, no additional appropriation is being requested from City Council. No additional appropriation is being requested from City Council. So this is a budget-neutral request. We are also told that we need to have a plan for an existing building. I don't think that that is our responsibility, however, we did go out and try to find some of that information for you. Once this is approved and we close those buildings, ownership of those buildings will go back to the city. So we put out our RFI, which is a Request for Information, to receive potential proposals and uses for those vacated buildings. We received two proposals and passed those on to City Council for their consideration. We also were asked to consider other costs to the city. You know, the school construction proposal is inclusive. It takes care of everything except for furniture and fixtures. However, we know that we have to put furniture and fixtures in those buildings. So we started this past summer, beginning to purchase furniture for both Van Pelt Elementary and the new intermediate school, because we are way out of date on the furniture that we have there, and we know that we have to provide new furniture for the new school. So we've already bought two grade levels worth of furniture this past year, we'll buy two grade levels of furniture this upcoming summer, and the following summer going into the new build, we'll also, we'll finish up and buy the last two grade levels of furniture. So we have that taken care of. Some information came to us during the public hearings, and we already knew that Highland View is functionally obsolete. So we got an estimate of what it would cost to demo that building, and the estimate was $145,000 to completely ground that building. A former council member actually came to one of our public hearings, and he said, what are you going to do with that building? No one in their right mind would buy that building. And I posed the question, but it's okay for us to send children there every single day. That, my friends, is not acceptable to me as a superintendent, and hopefully to you as a City Council member. We're also told to get the cost for a left-turn lane on Bonham and a new right-turn lane from Suncrest to Bonham. That estimate is somewhere between 200,000 to 250,000 unless that changed.
188.
So 188 is the actual estimate for that. We're asked what it would cost to put a red light in at the intersection of Bonham and Suncrest. Traffic studies have shared that we will not have the traffic volume there that would meet the requirements to put in a new traffic light. Transportation, if there's anything about this plan that keeps me up at night, or will keep me up at night over the next 18 months, is how are we going to deal with our car rider line? I don't know if that means anything to you guys as City Council members, but as a school person, car rider lines can be very difficult, and that's an understatement. And so we have already began the planning process. Actually, we received input from the public hearings that changed our plan. We actually are going to change the direction that a road comes in to make sure that we're better able to deal with the traffic that we'll have. That's certainly an issue that we're going to have to work through going forward. I'm not going to tell you to look through rose-colored glasses and say it's going to be perfect. We'll have a plan to deal with that traffic. If that plan doesn't work, we'll make adjustments, and if those adjustments don't work, we'll make adjustments again. That's what schools do. That's very similar to other new builds, your first traffic plan's not always the one that works, you have to work your way through it, but that's why we have leaders in the positions they do, because we can solve problems. Additional personnel, we don't expect that we'll need any additional bus drivers or additional buses, however, we do have a fleet of additional buses that we use for extra trips, so it's not like, even if we do have to add an additional run, that we'll have to buy a new bus. We'll have the buses available in case that does indeed occur. We're also asked to look for other financing options. To our knowledge, there are no other financing mechanisms, other than this triple net lease that you have before you tonight, that don't affect city's debt margin, affect your bond rating, or require a city contribution or obligation. As recently as the last month, we even were looking at another potential plan through the USDA, and come to find out, we would not qualify because of the city's inability to do a general obligation bond, and they're not willing even to do a moral obligation at that point. So we weren't eligible for that as well, for that financing model as well. That was something I'd never heard of before, but we continued to look for other financing options even up until the 11th hour. Quality of the building was also a concern. We don't want to build, the buildings that we've had have lasted over 200 years. The three buildings that we're going to close have served the city of Bristol for over 200 years combined. We didn't want to build a building that was not as structurally sound as the buildings that we have, and that was, we let our contractors know that, and they say the specifications they're using are for a 50-year lifespan, and that's above the industry norm. We also are using a local contractor who is very well-respected in our area. He's a well-known businessman who has vested interests in making sure this project goes right. He also has a lot of time, money, and energy already invested in this project, and I know that it will have a positive impact on our community by using a local contractor. But we'll also, because of that, we'll be able to hold that contractor accountable a lot easier than we could if it was somebody from out of state or out of town. So the game changed halfway through this process, and we were told that this needed to be not just a budget-neutral proposal, but a budget-positive. And so the potential of sealing our existing buildings for repurpose, one of the RFIs that we received, I told you about earlier, suggested that you could sell those buildings for between $10 to $25 a square foot. And you can see the estimates there, that for Stonewall Jackson, that means that you could get somewhere between a half a million to $1.2 million for selling that property. Washington Lee, $400 and some thousand dollars, up to a million, depending on which end of the range that you were on. So once these buildings were sold, you could take that money and apply it to a debt service fund that you could use to pay this, that we could use to pay this annual lease payment, and those properties would be on the tax roll, so they would generate revenue every single year, every single year. So it is truly a budget-positive proposal. Now, keep in mind, those estimates for Stonewall Jackson were before we had ever heard about the resort and the casino. If the resort and the casino comes through, I would guess, I'm not a real estate agent, but I would think that that $10 to $25 per square foot would increase. That would be a very valuable piece of property. We are also told to look at the cost of renovating our existing buildings. This was requested by City Council. We paid for the study, at your request, we paid for the study. We obtained the services of a very reputable architect out of Richmond, Mosley Architects, who do a lot of school designs and renovations across our Commonwealth. They provided detailed analysis and explained how those figures were arrived at. The entire report was provided to you, and it's been posted on our website. We could provide more precise costs for the individual buildings, but that would come at an even more significant investment and time, and that was from the architect, that's not from us. I will tell you, there's been some questions even from this council about those estimates being high. I will tell you this, if they are off by 300%, if the renovation costs are off by 300%, the best scenario of renovating is still more expensive than building a new school, if they're off by 300%. And they may be high, that's not my area of expertise, but if they would have to be high by 300% before it would even come close to being worthy of discussion, or being worthy of consideration, not discussion, but consideration. We also were asked to get the professional opinion of your financial advisor, Davenport. That was requested by City Council, but it was funded by us. We got a bill for a little over $15,000 for them to review this proposal. Their response says that this has not been done in the Commonwealth of Virginia without, no school has been financed without either a general obligation or a moral obligation. This has neither of those two. They also reported that this lease will be reported on the city's financial statement, but it will not count against the city's debt margin, per the Attorney General, and this should not result in a credit downgrade, and that comes from S&amp;P and from Moody's. We're also asked to get the professional opinion of the APA. They declined to respond and said that was not, that's not in their wheelhouse, they didn't provide that kind of information. However, I think that with the information from Davenport and also from the Attorney General, that should suffice. We did receive the professional opinion of the Attorney General. I won't read that to you, but he did say that this does not constitute debt as it applies to the legal debt margin that a locality is able to have. We're also asked, what would you do if unanticipated funding all of a sudden became available? So we went back to look at the 13 properties that we reviewed when we were looking to find the property to build the school on, and we took cost out of the equation. We had a very intense rubric that we used. Even when we took cost out of the equation, Van Pelt was still the number-one property. So regardless, even if financing becomes available that we were unaware of or unanticipated, Van Pelt is still the best available property in the city of Bristol, Virginia to build a new school. We're also asked to do a cash flow analysis, and our CFO and your CFO worked with their staffs to come up with a cash flow analysis. The first year that we go through this, there is the possibility that cash flow would become an issue. However, we did work with our PPA team to find out if we could do a semi-annual or a quarterly payment. They said definitely we could do a semi-annual payment. The worst-case scenario would be that we might have to get a separate appropriation, but by the end of the year, that dollar would balance back out, and it would not cost the city any additional money in the end. We may have to have a separate appropriation to get us through at the beginning, but it would not cost us any additional money in the end. And then finally, referendum. When we were asked if it would be a referendum, we said absolutely we would, but come to find out, our city charter does not allow referendums. I know that's something that our council is looking at changing, but currently under this plan, the city charter does not allow that. Do you all mind if I get a drink? So I think it's fair to say that there's citywide consensus, actually, Mr. Mayor, these are your words, no one's arguing that Bristol needs a new school. We know that Bristol needs a new school. As a matter of fact, it's not just the citywide consensus, it's also nationwide. The Washington Post has written about the poor conditions of our schools. The Roanoke Times has written about the poor conditions of our schools. The Roanoke Times classifies us as being, having three of our schools as being among the three, three of the oldest schools in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia, and that would be Virginia Middle School, Highland View, and Stonewall Jackson. Timing, you know, timing is being the issue that keeps coming up and up and up and up over and over again. Well, truly, if timing is an issue, that's the one thing that's been constant throughout this whole thing. If timing's an issue, why did we go through all of those assignments and tasks that we just did if timing was going to keep us from doing this? I mean, that's the only thing that hasn't changed, the timing. Everything, I mean, that is the one constant, is that we have a fall's debt payment coming. That has not changed. And so if that is truly a reason not to approve this, why are we waiting till now to decide that? But I will ask you, what do we gain by kicking this down the road? A warm and fuzzy feeling? We might feel safer if we wait till later to do it, but we really don't gain anything. We only have risk if we kick it down the road, because here's what we do know: The cost will be higher, which means the school will be smaller, the payments will be bigger, because we know interest rates are going up, and we know the cost to build is going up. Currently, this plan, as it sits today, costs our taxpayers zero additional dollars. Zero additional dollars to our taxpayers. If you kick this down the road, we know that we're going to have to build a new school. Mayor, you've said that yourself. If we kick it down the road, the people who are going to suffer for that are the taxpayers of the city of Bristol, Virginia, because we have a plan right now that will not cost them any additional money out of their pockets. If we kick it down the road, we're looking at higher costs, smaller school, bigger payments, and increased taxes on our citizens. As a matter of fact, a former City Council member, who I think is a financial guru, calls this financing plan a no-brainer as far as the timing goes, and that was in an email sent October the 1st, 2018. sent October the 1st, 2018. He's blushing, I called him a guru, and he's blushing. So, that, as far as the debt service and the timing goes, if now's not the time, Mr. Ead said this past week that it would probably be at least seven years before we would have the capacity to borrow between five and eight million dollars. Seven years from now, five and eight million dollars will might maybe build two or three classrooms. It certainly would not build a school. And if you borrowed that money to do it at that time, you would be right back at the top of your legal debt margin. The city manager also said at that time that we, it will all be long gone before we are at a healthy debt limit. This plan does not have an impact on the debt margin. This plan, there's no other plan out there that can do that. General obligation, moral obligation, traditional financing, all will have an impact on the debt margin. This triple-net lease does not do that. You know, this plan would be a drain for other localities. Let me give you an example. A few years ago, Smith County built Oak Point Elementary School with a capacity of about 400 students. We're building an elementary school that will house over 600 students. The local appropriation increase for debt service went up by about $700,000 in Smith County when that school, so, when that school was built, Smith County Board of Supervisors had to start appropriating about $700,000 additional to what they were appropriating at, at that time. We're not asking for an increase at all. We're asking to keep our appropriation exactly where it is. There, I promise you, we just, we were just in Williamsburg, and let me congratulate Mr. Foster on being elected to be the president of the Virginia School Boards Association this past week. It's quite an honor for him, but more importantly, for the city of Bristol. But while we were there, there were multiple questions from folks saying that they wanted to follow this plan, because there is no, there, any school that they had seen built had caused an additional appropriation to be given by the appropriating body. We are not doing that, and we have the numbers that have been vetted. You've seen the numbers that say that we can do it. So, I'm rounding third and heading for home, but let me just dispel a few myths. No job losses are expected. If you, if you've been told that we're going to have mass layoffs, that's not true. We average 20 contracted staff a year leaving our division. We will be absorbing less than 20 positions. Now, we may have a very specific position where somebody doesn't leave our division, doesn't retire, doesn't resign, where we have to look at doing something different, but our board's plan all along has been to make these savings without laying off staff. So, we have on average 20. We're going to replace 10 or 11 total staff members, if you need that number, I'll give it to you, but way less than 20, so we do not anticipate any layoffs. We also don't anticipate any effect, any future effect on teacher salaries. For the last 15 years, for 15 years, this city's appropriation to our schools has averaged $6.7 million. For 15 years, $6.7 million, that's the average appropriation. Over the last 15 years, we have given multiple, multiple raises to our teachers and our staff. This plan will not affect that. It will not have any impact at all. We will continue to look to pay our teachers better. Our teachers are among the lowest-paid in the state of Virginia. Teachers in Virginia are among the lowest-paid in the, in the United States of America. We are going to continue to prioritize, one of our board goals is to prioritize paying our teachers better, at least comparable to the school divisions around us. This plan will not affect that. For the last 15 years, our appropriation has remained relatively constant, and we've been able to give raises. Our focus will be to continue to do that in the future. A safety plan is in place. Specifics are not disclosed for obvious reasons. The other thing is that the city is not approving the school tonight. Or are you approving to give us more money? The Code of Virginia says very specifically about the PPA process is that we cannot enter a comprehensive agreement without the blessing from our appropriating body. Just a few other things, and this is, I'm halfway home now. Bristol, Virginia Public Schools and JA Street have already invested considerable time, money, and resources. Probably, well, definitely over $100,000 between us, maybe up to $200,000 between us, already into this project. We ought to, we ought to at least find out what the interest rate is, for all the time, effort, and energy that our school board has put into this and a local contractor has put into it as well. The savings plan that we've provided to you has been reviewed and scrutinized by many people, not just us, not just the city, but by many people, the financiers of both proposals, Davenport. Everybody believes that the, the structure, the savings plan is not only doable, but many have said it's very conservative. We also anticipate an increase in state funding, which will just be icing on the cake, cake or gravy on the biscuits, whichever one you prefer. If we get that anticipated increase in state funding, we're good without it. If we get an anticipated increase in state funding, we're, we're golden at that point. Plan D would require additional funding from the city. We've presented a plan where we don't have to ask for any, any additional money. If you don't approve this tonight, we know that we have to make improvements in our schools, and there'll just be Band-Aids, because we're, we'd be making improvements to a 1938 building, a 1948 building, and a 1968 building. A million or more-dollar Band-Aid is a pretty significant investment when we're offering a appropriation-neutral plan that would prevent that from our appropriation to having to increase. Putting this off when we have such an extraordinary offer on the table will also cause a lack of trust from future investors. I promise you, you can, you can run this up any poll, or, or talk to any financial advisor about it, you won't find a better deal than this. If we turn our nose up to it tonight, we'll have a hard time finding anybody who will trust us in the future to provide another plan, even if we have the capacity to do so then. So, in conclusion, we don't need any additional money from city council. We would prefer to have our old appropriation back, but we'll make it work on our current appropriation. We have met every challenge that city council has issued, and, and some. Bristol's students deserve to have the same opportunities as the students they're going to be competing, competing for, for placement in colleges and jobs in the future. Not only that, students in Bristol need to have the same opportunity regardless of which street they live on, because right now, depending on which street you live on, has a huge impact on the equity of the building and the education that you receive. Not necessarily the teachers, that's not what I'm saying, but depending on what street you live on determines which building you go to, and many of our students go to inadequate buildings, not inadequate schools, but inadequate buildings. Please look at our students as an investment and not an expense. They're, they're an opportunity, and they're not an obligation. Look at them as such. Our, our students deserve at least that. So, this can be Bristol, or we can continue as we have since 1938. I know from, speaking from our school board, this is the direction that we've been looking to go since 2011. You hold the fate of that decision in your hands tonight without, without, without us asking for any additional appropriation. So, this, this council has made many courageous decisions recently to improve Bristol's future. You've had the courage to make tough decisions about business, finances, and even charter changes most recently. However, the most important decisions that a locality can make is about their children. So, I ask you tonight to display the same courage you've shown in other areas to our children. As you know, I often wear my emotion on my sleeve, and I try not to, but it gets the best of me sometimes, but tonight, I wear a badge of courage, because our school board truly, truly wants all of our students to have the potential to thrive. In regards to our, and, and I speak for our school board, and I also speak for many of our children. In regards to our children and their future, we ask that you vote in a manner tonight that when you look in the mirror in the morning, you can say that you voted in a way that was courageous for Bristol's future and our children, both today and for generations to come. Thank you very much.
All right, with that, next we got public comment. First person signed up, Langley Shazer.
Langley Shazer, 409 West Mary Street. At the 20, the October 23rd meeting, I spoke about some of the concerns and questions brought up by the community and myself. I will not be revisiting those today, as I'm sure you all will continue to hear issues surrounding safety, traffic, congestion, transportation, social disparity, et cetera. Rather, I'd like to present a couple of questions and concerns around some other aspects of this development. I know everyone's aware of the financial situation of the city and the cost of this development. It is a unique situation that it is budget-neutral or could be budget-positive, but this is contingent on two major variables, that the city can continue to contribute the, to education in its current amount as allotted by the budget, and also that the developer can get the interest rate that they have proposed in this development. If either of these variables change, this becomes unaffordable. This is important, because obviously, if we cannot get those interest rates, then it's impossible to move forward with the development, and so, in that regard, I urge council to ensure that these, this detail and others move as promised by the developer and all parties involved. Also, this may not be as much common knowledge, but major economists, wealth managers, stockbrokers, et cetera, all agree that their country is, is about 18 months away from another recession. It is unsure how hard the economy will be impacted, but it is coming nonetheless. So, this is the same timeframe that we're trying to launch and complete this proposed development. What is the plan if the financial composition of this entire enterprise changes, especially since the city is not in a position to take on any other obligation, legal, moral, or otherwise? Even if everything does go to, go to plan, we still have some other issues, which would be the substantial dollar savings will come at the cost of jobs. Jobs in a field that already has seen a 35% decrease in college enrollment for that career path, as well as an annual 8% attrition rate for non-retirees. Another issue is that the school can only support a 5% increase in student population before it reaches its capacity. So, with the city working diligently to bring large-scale developments in, what are we going to do with a school that can't support the influx of families and students, and how are we going to get them educated going forward? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person on the list, Archie Hubbard.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, my name's Archie Hubbard. I live at 112 Harvest Road, Bristol, Virginia. First of all, I'd like to compliment the school board and Dr. Perrigen and the finance, they do all the number-crunching, all y'all do is pass on the orders. So, I know how hard you guys work. Very good, good presentation. You answered about 80% of my issues, that was, that was good. So, I'll skip the 30 minutes and get down to the brass knuckles. One item was, and I wasn't clear on you, about $325,000 worth of additional expenses that were discovered or brought up during your presentations to the members of the public. It was like $145,000 and then $200,000, but turned out to be only like $188,000, so that's around $325,000. Is that included in the $18,500?
We, we'll give you a chance to say, keep going while you're on the clock.
Yeah, all right. I also learned that $18,500 includes the bond fees, and includes everything as far as street work up there. If that's the case, then at the current quote of somewhere between 4.5, 4.7, if they get that rate without any city involvement whatsoever, that'd be fantastic, and that also will put it under the 1.3. It'll be like 128, 126, 1.26. The issue, there were mentioned that if you want to replace the money we had to take out in the last budget year, which I think was $300,000. Although they said if we didn't put it back, they had other plans to do it, well, I suggest they need to do that, because no additional city money certainly changes its tune if $300,000 comes back on from the budget we have for this year. So, if they can get away, don't need that. I think it's close enough. If the $18,500 is truly the total ball of wax, the only issue left is, is the $325,000 part of that figure. If not, where's the money coming from? The other issue is who's going to pay for the buildings while they're empty? They're going to be turned back over to the city, which is, you know, they're already the city's property. Somebody's got to pay for utilities for those buildings until they're sold or torn down, and that's not necessarily cheap. Who's going to pay that bill? So, there are some things that are still floating around that I think need to be addressed, but I have no problems if I'd like to see them get the, the bond rate tonight, but I don't want to have the final say to go ahead, just because they may get a rate that keeps it under 1.3.
Thank you. Dr. Perrigen, you want to address the question on the additional cost of the demolition of Highland View and the road?
So, I, I assume that's what you're, the $325,000 is the demolition of Highland View, and the $188,000, that is not included in the, in the, sorry, in the $18,500, excuse me. However, demolishing Highland View is only my recommendation, it's not my decision. That would be a decision that the city council would make. The $145,000 demolition cost is taking into consideration the amount of asbestos that's in that building, that is made by a local excavator who does that type of work. So, that's not, certainly not part of the plan. And then the $188,000 to widen the road at Bonham and Suncrest is also not part of the plan, and it, it's not my place to say how that that would be paid, because that's not part of the school project, even though it's connected to the school project. But my recommendation to city council would be this, for an amount of $188,000 plus $145,000, that ends up being, whatever that ends up being, I think that there is potentially a payout coming from Bristol, Virginia Utilities with a settlement, there would be plenty of money to pay for that with, and/or there was a significant $6 million carryover from the city funds last year as well, in addition to the, the $8 million that was in the, in the reserve account. And I'm probably using the wrong terminology, but we would call it carryover on the, on the school side. We, we cert, I guess what I, we should also say is we don't have the cash on hand to pay for that, because we have set to, the money that we do have available for things such as that, we're putting into furniture and furnishings at the new school and Van Pelt, and also the renovations that we have to do to the 1974 building, which is at Van Pelt. So, we, all those monies are spoken for.
All right, next person, Virginia Goodson, are good?
My name is Virginia Goodson, and I live at 241 Heritage Drive, Bristol, Virginia. That is the Village Green subdivision, where the new intermediate school is planned to be built. My house was the second house built in that location before it was annexed into the city. Thank you to the city council for allowing me this opportunity to speak tonight. Most of these thoughts I share with you tonight were shared at the public hearing at Stonewall Jackson, September the 27th to 2018. I did attend all four of the public hearings. Let me assure you, I agree we need a new 21st-century school or schools. I believe timing is paramount in this decision process, and my perception of timing is evidently not on the same page as the school board and the superintendent. But I remain constant in my belief that all elementary students do not need to be transported to the Exit 7 location for their education. I felt that way January 2018, when I spoke at a school board meeting, and I remain committed to that decision now. Our main concern and devotion should be a quality education for all students, and I feel that school consolidation will jeopardize the quality and the attention our students are already getting at the elementary schools now. I feel there will be a void, a loss of community involvement if we close these schools, and what will be the future of Stonewall Jackson, Highland View... what will be the future of Stonewall Jackson, Highland View, and Washington Lee? Now, take a look at the old Oak Street School and School Board Office at two-two-two Oak Street. Think about how long and involved Mr. White, Mr. Cameron, and I were to move from that location to a handicapped, accessible location, and now what is happening to that historic building? I have sincere concerns regarding the cost of this new twenty-first-century school. Eighteen-point-five million dollars to build with a thirty-year lease, lifetime cost thirty-seven million, six-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, a lease payment of approximately one million, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, five-hundred dollars. Where will we all be? Who will make every new administration and school board aware of these obligations? What will happen if we can't meet the payment requirement? All questions are worthy of some long-range planning and what-ifs. I thought it would have been a good idea to have a survey for teachers, school personnel, and administrators to get some idea of how they felt about consolidation. When I was on the school board for eight years, we always offered that opportunity to our personnel, to our teachers, and to our families.
Ma'am, your time's up. Your time's up.
I'm sorry.
Try to finish up quickly. Try to finish up really quickly. All right, Ginger Fleener?
My name is Ginger Fleener. I live at two-thirty-nine Sherwood Road. I am here not with my emotions on my sleeve or anything else. I'm here as a mother of two babies. My biggest concern, like I've said before, is my children's safety. I don't like the idea of hidden plans as a parent. As a parent of two kids, I deserve to know every fact of where my child is going to be at school, what is set up specifically for them if there was an evacuation. I should know that stuff. From the beginning in all of this, I've never tried to be somebody I wasn't. I've never been fake. I've always been point-blank, flat-out, here you go. I have been through a lot, and this is not something that I want my kids in. There's so many uncertainties that I've got about all of this, there's so many questions that I don't have answers to. As a mother, I'm not comfortable with this. I can't express to you enough how important this is to me. We're talking about lives. I've had a choice to put my children in a school that I wanted them in. My number-one choice was Van Pelt because of a building. I went there, and I walked right out as fast as I walked in. And to this day, they both go to Highland View. As a parent, I did not look at a building. It had nothing to do with the building for me. That's the last thing on my mind. I want to know that the people that are around my kids, they're going to take care of them, and I don't have to worry about their safety. I don't have to worry about somebody not being around them that shouldn't be around them. These community schools are much more than just buildings and teachers going to school. It's a family. It's a built family outside of their home. To take that away from a community and just throw them into something that looks good, it's not worth it. All honesty, for example, makeup, you slap that stuff on, and you'll look better than what you did before you had it on. Just because something looks good doesn't mean it always is good. It's too rushed into, and the biggest mistakes you can make is the ones you rush into way too fast. Please, please think about this hard and pray. I know in the end, it's what God's going to have done will be done, and I pray that he has touched our all's heart in the right way.
Thank you. Our next person is Brandy Cantor.
My name is Robert Kell, and I work for a nonprofit organization. Brandy is a parent who I work with, whose daughter was sick, and she's unable to make it tonight, but she sent me with her statement, so I would like to read it to you. My name is Brandy, and I'm a citizen of Bristol. I live at seventeen, seven-eighteen Oakview Avenue. I'm a concerned parent. My son Isaiah is in the third grade at Highland View. He has ADHD. He is not a bad student, just a student who needs special attention in small classrooms. He is achieving at Highland View. He has all A's. If he is moved to a consolidated school, he will no longer be successful. His behavioral problems are going to get worse. He will be just another student in a teacher's full class. He will be overly disciplined and suspended. My daughter will start kindergarten at Highland View next year. Highland View is in walking distance from my home. My daughter gets carsick easily, so I plan to walk her to school. If the new school is built, she and other students will spend more time on the bus before and after school. Like many parents in our city, I do not own a car. I cannot drive my children to school. I cannot drive to school when my children are sick for parent conferences, for after-school activities, or to advocate for my children when they need me the most. Like many parents, I can walk, though, and I do walk to Highland View. I care deeply about my children's education, and I want to be an involved parent. This new school will keep me from that. The school board's decision to place the new school over by Van Pelt sends a signal that low-income parents, students, and families come second to wealthier families. Another neighborhood in our city gets to keep at school. Other parents get to continue to walk their children to school, while people who live in public housing or in the farthest corners of our city have to settle for something else. If the city votes to consolidate schools, I have no other choice but to consider moving to Bristol, Tennessee, so that I can live in walking distance of an elementary school. There are a lot of parents who cannot be here tonight because they have to work, they can't drive here, or they don't understand what's happening. I pray that you will not vote for this proposal. I pray that you will not create more barriers for low-income families to thrive in this city. Please vote no. And one additional note, as a community organizer working for a nonprofit, working with people who are directly affected by issues, I have been asked by parents and community members to step up and see what we could do. So, after September, when those folks came to me, I began knocking on doors in your city. I knocked on a lot of doors, a little over a hundred doors, mostly in public housing and mostly in low-income communities. And people in those communities, one, either did not know that this was happening, or two, are very adamant that this is not good for their families. So, as you plan for your city, please do not forget the people who are most reliant on your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Jackie Naufman.
To the City Council, may I have some assistance, please? Thank you. To the City Council, Mr. Mayor, to the school board. My name is Jackie Naufman, and I live at twenty-one MacArthur Circle. Homeowner, taxpayer, and I love my city. We're talking about and repeating ourselves over and over, and I have reiterated my concerns about the location, about the emergency plan, the safety, about the transportation. So, you've heard all that, and we've been shown information pertaining to it. There is no plan in place for parents who no longer walk their children to the school participating in school activities, just to pick up their kids if they're sick, or even if they're well, just to come and visit, or to advocate for their child. There is no plan. There is, we'll fix it when we get to it. On March the twelfth, and before I make this statement, I remember in nineteen-ninety-five that you brought to my attention at the last City Council meeting, another City Council meeting, and it went into the paper that stated, "We don't know how this is going to happen or what this is going to do. We're just going to do it." That's in my phrase, but you remember that, that conversation and that statement, which brought us to the condition of the city that we have now. No one looked, no one cared about the monies that were being spent, or they didn't have the capacity to understand you don't spend money that you don't have, and you don't continue borrowing when you don't have a plan. But on March the twelfth of this year, the Bristol Hurry Courier published an article entitled "Black Special Ed Students Disputely Disciplined in Schools." The article details how black students make up ten percent of the school's population but account for nineteen percent of the school's suspensions, which are, which we know is a lot of disparities happening in the elementary school level. Children are learning how to be students, and parents are learning how to advocate for their child. When the potential disabilities have not been discovered, and there is no IEP to provide them legal protection, a consolidated school will exacerbate these issues. You will be busing poorest, the most diverse students away from their neighborhoods, and you will be placing them in the wealthiest, the whitest part of our city. You will be placing students into larger classrooms. You will be disturbing decades of relationship between teachers, principals, and communities on a moral sense, on a thought of what's best for the children. Another thought that we should leave around before you make your decision, and I'm in my three minutes. If Highland View is so toxic right now, why do kids go to school today? And who's going to be responsible later on when what's happening to them, they have been breathing? Who's going to be responsible for that?
Okay, thank you. All right, next is Michael Pollard.
Thank you. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at one-on-one Ashley Drive. Dr. Perrigen has repeatedly used the term triple-net lease. This term means that unlike most leases, the school board will be responsible for insurance and all maintenance, and normally taxes, but a public school doesn't pay taxes. The school board will need to budget for those increased expenses, and they won't be able to incorporate all the savings from the buildings that will be closed. He also said that they've been pursuing this since two thousand and eleven. Unfortunately, the council at that time decided they would rather spend the money on the falls. I read the contract, and there were two things I saw and one I didn't. I was glad to see abundant protections for the school district from unplanned expenses and liability. I was not so glad to see, after all the times we've been told that the project will not cost the city a dime, that the contract requires, in several places, that the district requests an appropriation for the full amount, as much as one-point-three million dollars per year. Even if this request is a formality, we all know exactly how the budget discussions will go for each of the next thirty years, as the City Council is demonized for gutting the school budget by one-point-three million below their request. And I also do not see what will happen after the thirty years has expired, whether the building will then be owned free and clear by the district, or whether the lease will be renegotiated at an inflation-adjusted three-point-one-five million a year. If Dr. Perrigen can point that out, I would appreciate it, because I might have just missed it. As an additional consideration, many believe the casino to be a done deal. If this is the case, we must delay, because the information provided about that project, if true, will allow this school to be paid for in cash after one year. But once this agreement is signed, the cost will go immediately from eighteen-point-five million to the proposed thirty-seven-point-six million, and according to the contract, as much as thirty-nine million, depending on the cost at closing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Perrigen, you want to comment on the end-of-the-lease arrangements?
Yes, so at the end of the lease, we do own the building. I don't know where to point you to that in the contract, but at the end of the lease, the lease expires. We also have a ground lease with the financiers. They're leasing the ground from us. At the end of the lease, the improvements that they put on that ground lease come ours?
More of a lease-to-home.
Lease-to-home, absolutely, yes, sir. The, actually, we already have maintenance factored into the current buildings. Maintenance will be less on a new building than it is on an old building, so there actually will be savings there, and insurance is accounted for in the savings. So, I mean, that is accounted for. Cash in one year, the twenty-six million, I think, is probably what you're referring to. That does not happen the first year of the casino. That happens several years in. By the time that we get the casino built, get several years in, the cost to build that school will exceed anything that we're talking about right now. One other thing that I didn't get to answer, questions from our first speaker, we, what is the plan if we have a recession? We've had the world, one of the worst recessions in American history during the last fifteen years. Our appropriation has averaged six-point-seven million dollars. We, I mean, if there's a recession worse than that, I don't want to be part of it, but we've been able to make things work, even in the worst recession in recent American history. And then, if there's, you say we have five percent increase in enrollment, that's the potential that we have. If the casino comes in, what if we don't build a new school and the casino comes in? We are so far behind the eight ball at that point, which I, that's what scares me. The casino comes in, and we've not done anything, and we have to start from scratch there. Then we're really going to be in trouble, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. All right, next, Nancy Marney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council and the school board, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I own property. I pay taxes. I'm a product of the Bristol, Virginia public school system. Bristol, Virginia is a multifaceted entity. The school system is only one of those facets, only one. This city has many needs. We have wants, we have wishes, we have needs, but the school system is only one facet of this city. I think one of the first things that needs to be done is to put things into proper context and reality. There is a reality that needs to be dealt with, and one of those things is we have a debt service that is overwhelming, more than a hundred-and-thirty million dollars. Now, if our school system is having trouble now, this year, and every year, managing its affairs on the money it receives now from both the state and the city and wherever else, how in the name of heaven can they take on additional expense? It does not add up. Arithmetic, not higher math, arithmetic shows it does not add up. It won't work. I think that one of the things that we need to pay particular attention to is false assumptions. We already know that false assumptions have gotten us millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars' worth of debt. We know that. Arithmetic will show us that, not higher math, arithmetic. It's on the books. False assumptions. Now, we have the debt, we have reality, we have proper context. We had a group of people several years back who created and existed in a utopian fog, fueled by delusions of grandeur. This city is suffering desperately right now from that very line of thinking. That was the line of thinking. That was the line of thinking. When there is a big problem to be dealt with, now, Mr. Mayor, I really need two or three minutes.
Can you wrap it up?
Thank you, sir.
Can you wrap it up?
When there is a big problem to be solved, that problem is nearly always broken down into smaller parts. We have that now. We have a big problem in our educational society in this city right now, and we have four smaller schools that can be programmed properly to deal with these big problems. That can be done. I could do that. I've been a professional educator 58 years. I'm not the new kid on this block. I think in closing, I do not see a negative impact if this school is not built. I see no negative impact at all. The city now owns the school buildings free and clear as of June or July. The streets are in, the utilities are in, the telephone lines are in, everything works. The transportation is worked out, the community's developed around each of the school buildings, and I do not see a negative impact. I think this, I will close with this comment. There is a saying, Lord knows where it came from, but it's prominent in the city at this time. Think big or go home. Now, my original intent was to say hogwash, and I decided that might be a little bit crude and inappropriate, so maybe I won't say hogwash. But what I will say is I think that is an incredibly low level of thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for the extra time. I needed it.
All right, since that's the end of public comment, I've got to request that we want to take a 10-minute recess and then we'll reconvene in here in 10 minutes. All right, I think we're ready to get reconvened. So at this time, we've went through the presentation, we've heard public comments, so the next item is council motion second, so what is the pleasure of Bristol, Virginia City Council?
I move that we approve the comprehensive agreement as presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Osborne to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Second with Mr. Hartley. Okay, council discussion.
Well, first off, I want to start out with, that was a very good presentation that you delivered tonight. This school board and staffing has worked diligently on this and it's obvious, it's evident. But I still have major concerns with this. And one of my major concerns is that debt that's coming, and I think y'all all know that. We're falling short somewhere around $2 million as we sit here tonight on that commitment. We had to pull back $300,000 from the school system this last budget. If this council moves forward with this, we're pretty much guaranteeing the school system of steady funding. And I cannot see an avenue that is going to allow us to guarantee that as we sit here tonight. There may be another year or two before that debt actually hits, or the year that that debt does hit, if we do not grow this city, we are going to be forced into more cuts, but we are desperately trying to raise the revenues through businesses and generating new tax dollars. And I do not see how we can make that commitment. I'm speaking for myself, I don't know how the rest of these gentlemen are going to vote tonight. But one of my concerns, and I did address y'all with this, was how was you going to go back and recapture your capital depreciation? And that has never been answered. This building may be delivered to you with the set of keys saying it has a 50-year warranty. But these heat and air systems, the best you're going to get is a five-year on the compressor in one to two years and parts and labor on the rest of it. That's the best you're going to get. And that rubber roof only has a life expectancy of around 15 years, and you're talking millions when it needs to be replaced. And you have got to show me how you're going to capture that depreciation to move forward, because that is one of the biggest problems that I have seen in this city, is that we do not maintain our buildings. We never have maintained our buildings. We use all the life out of them and then scream a new one and borrow money instead of having a line item in our budget for capital improvements. And shame on this city for operating like that. You've made a statement that you've had level funding for 15 years at $6.7 million. I want to remind this city, that whole entire 15 years, this city has borrowed money to pay its debt and to pay its bills, to keep the lights on. They use the tans constantly. This council is the first council in decades that has got this city in a position where it does not have to borrow money to pay its bills. So we are moving forward, and it's been a hard pill to swallow. We have made our share of enemies and people that do not like us for our voting, but that's just part of this job up there. But as I sat here tonight, I want to congratulate you and acknowledge y'all's efforts to bring this before this city. Because you have diligently worked on this. And you have heard and you spoke of the timing issue tonight. That has been one of my biggest concerns. Your timing is terrible. This city is not ready for this. Do we need a new school? Absolutely, we do. This city needs a lot, but we can't afford it all. And we are in a position where we have to prioritize what are we going to spend, what money we have? And how are we going to get more money without being such a tax burden onto the community? So there's a fine balance that we have to navigate. I mean, we got police officers out there trying to keep us safe in this city, and they're breaking down, their cars are literally breaking down on duty and happened to be towed back in for service because they've exceeded their life cycle. That's not a good place to be. There are, one said tonight, there are wants, there are wishes, and there are needs. And we have to look at our true needs as this city, because we can't afford any wants right now. And wishes is just a pipe dream. My position is what it is tonight, has what it's always been. I cannot vote in favor of this, simply because this city has not got a foothold to where we need to be financially. And until we get there, I think we need to freeze all unnecessary spending until we can establish finances that this city is comfortable with to be able to say, we can now pay our bills. Because right now, we cannot pay our bills. If that debt showed up tomorrow, we could not pay it. If we don't grow this city in three years when it shows up, we're not going to be able to pay it. And we're going to have to start looking at every avenue to pay that bill. And there's only three or four that we have. Right off the top of my head, it's raise taxes, cut expenditures, that's jobs, and start cutting budgets. I mean, the timing is terrible. Your concept is beautiful. It's just not the right time. I'm done.
Mr. Mayor.
Anthony, it's council discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to first start with hello. My name's Anthony, and I'm the new guy up here. I was sworn in and took this seat about six days ago. So it's been a busy week. A lot of people have been asking me about what my thoughts are on this, and if I even understand all the details of it, since I'm so new. This issue hits pretty close home to me. My wife is an elementary school teacher. Now, she teaches in the county. She grew up in the county, went to county schools, got hired in the county after college. But I think I have a good understanding about what teachers are going through every day and what it's like in the classroom. We said earlier, you know, no one is disagreeing that we need, it'd be great to have a new building, that a lot of our buildings are subpar. But I have some concerns about this. I think our teachers are worried. Teachers and departments already have budgets that are at zero or very close to it. I think our teachers are concerned that if something doesn't work out with the budget, the next thing that will be cut, the only thing left to cut, will be jobs. I know we're saying now that we can afford it now, the first year, but we have this payment for the next 30 years, and I'm worried about future budgets as soon as years three or five or seven going forward. I'm worried that we'll lose good teachers because we can't afford to pay them. And the ones that we can keep, we will lose them too because we can't afford to give them raises and they'll go somewhere else. We cannot have our teachers going home at night worrying about, will I have a job next And I'm worried that if we move forward with this plan right now, that teachers will lose their jobs in the future. I want what's best for my daughter and for your daughters and for your sons. And I think if we want what's best for our kids, we need to make sure we focus on our teachers first and not just our buildings. I would rather have our teachers teaching in an older building than standing in the unemployment line. So I agree with what the vice mayor has said, I think this is a great plan, but I think the timing is bad. We can't afford this right now, and I can't support this like it is tonight.
After I was sworn in in July, I went and I visited and toured every single elementary school, all four of them. And I say at least one of our principals here tonight, and thank you for coming. Every one of these schools, my takeaway, they all have problems, but every one of them, they're full of amazing faculty and staff who love and care for the students, and this won't change because of new building. What would change, however, is the quality of the learning environment, and that's substantial. Obviously, we all have concerns with the location, the logistics of the traffic and transport of the students, and that's understood. And I don't think anyone in here would be able to stand up with a straight face and say this location is their real first choice. But doing this project now with the unique financing plan is the only way I see for us being able to do this for the foreseeable future. Our need for school is not new. The city council in the 90s knew of a need and they did a landfill instead. The city council several years ago knew of the need and entered into a retail development. If we don't do this now and with this financial structure, when are we going to do it and how are we going to do it? It's been said it could be seven or eight years before we'd even have the capacity to borrow some money, and it's not enough to build a school on its own. And are we going to effectively tell an entire generation of children that they don't have access to a real 21st century education during their most formative years if we don't do this? So I intend to vote yes, because we need it, we need this as a city. And I honestly, I cannot with a clear conscience look the children in the city in the eye and tell them that they don't deserve the same equal opportunity that children from all over the corners of the Commonwealth have.
Well, I will say in my four and a half years on council, by far, this is the toughest decision that I've ever had to make. I mean, this is, and part of it is, it gets back to the issues that everybody knows in our financial situation and the debt. And what you see here is the effects of debt, that we are constrained. We can't do what we need to do, what everybody would like to do, build a new school to help our kids. We can't do that, because previous councils, as you mentioned, in the 90s and the 2000s, whatever, did not see to update the schools, to keep up with the maintenance, as you've mentioned, Mr. Wingard, to maybe look at building a new school, renovating schools for whatever reason. And I keep thinking, you know, when, there's an old saying, when's the best time to plant a tree 20 years ago? When's the next best time? Today? You know, is it the best location? No. I mean, I think everybody agrees with that. I understand, and I want to applaud particularly Ms. Goodson and Ms. Fleaner, because as a parent, I've been to all of the, I think just about every meeting to when they toured the locations, and I know y'all have as well, and I appreciate your involvement. I understand the issues that Mr. Kiel said and Ms. Nofflin about the children over there and walking to school. You know, I get that. Those are my neighbors in that neighborhood. So yeah, there are problems, but you know, as Dr. Perigin pointed out, we're here to look at the financing. Nobody asked us to approve the location or how the school operates. You know, we're here to approve the financing. And if you'd have asked me this question, actually after the first meeting at Washington Lee, I always said wait six months. I think I even told Dr. Perigin, I have some major concerns about this. And one of my major concerns was he kept asking that we would have to add $250,000 back into the budget to get to where they need it. Since then, this is budget neutral with the current appropriation. You know, there's a cap on the amount that would, of the annual payment, there's, you know, a cap on the amount of the total construction cost, the maximum price not to exceed. The more I thought about it between, over the last probably 60 days, every time I thought about, we could wait, we could find out, is the state going to give us money? Will the casino come? All of these different scenarios, and every time I kept coming back to the same thing, all we're going to do by waiting is make the cost of this go up anywhere into the hundreds of thousands, at least 100,000, probably 200, maybe 250, depending on what interest rates do, depending on inflations, depending on the cost of steel because of tariffs. So by waiting, this is just going to cost more and more and more. They can do it today with no incremental financing from the city, with the existing appropriation. We can solve, you know, you mentioned there's a lot of problems, and I agree, there are a lot of problems in the city, not just schools, police cars, other things that we put off. This is one problem I think we could actually solve, so that if we do get in a good financial position, I know people mentioned about the casino, and when we see a windfall, then we won't be worrying about the school at that time, that we can, you know, that's been taken care of. We can deal with some of these other issues. Otherwise, this is just going to get right in line if we do see some kind of windfall with, you know, the landfill, the police cars, the other maintenance, raises, all kinds of things that the city needs. So, you know, to me, I just don't see how, you know, if we keep pushing this off. And I guess the thing that worries me the most, both as a parent, is, you know, what's the alternative? Because, you know, nobody has said, but if I had to guess, and we have to wait five to 10 years, I don't think Highland View's still going to be open. I mean, I really hate to say that. And I hate that for a whole lot of reasons, for those kids over there, I hate it for what it do that that neighborhood. And, you know, all that's going to do, and you mentioned putting a Band-Aid on a problem, is you're going to take schools that already have problems, put them at capacity, and then try to fix those. And there is no other way than using this, which gets back to my original point, because of the debt, without using this alternative method of financing, there is no other way to deal with those problems. So we can solve some problems here. So we can solve some problems here. Is it a perfect solution? No, but I think it's a good one. I think it's something that we can do to move forward, and I don't see that it adds any, you know, to me, because it doesn't add any incremental financing to what we've already got budgeted. I'm all right with that. Had it added financing, I'd say wait six months. Wait till the budget. I couldn't approve something that I know going into the budget season, we're going to have to look at adding money. But right now, this, being truly budget neutral with the current appropriation, I can live with that.
All right, with that, I'll wrap up. I do want to congratulate the school system. The effort you put into this is obvious. That became, came clear as we met more and more that you really put a lot of effort in this, so I congratulate you. I think the community, just by showing up to their meetings, showed your interest in this project. I think everyone that's got up, not only tonight, but previous meetings, and through all the school system meetings, that's voiced your approval or your concerns. Don't ever stop that. That's what gets us to good decisions. So whatever the decision is tonight on this council, we're still Bristol, Virginia at the end of the day. We're still going to move forward as a city. So let's keep our head up, no matter what happens, and let's keep moving forward. With that, please call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, could I address some of the concerns? There's some things that were untrue that were stated, and our school board does not have an opportunity to weigh in as well.
Okay, all right. Fair enough.
I guess when we first entered this, this process years ago, or not years ago, but months ago, year and a half ago probably, 18 months ago, you know, the one charge was, if you can do it within your appropriation, we're with you. And, you know, and we found a way to do that. That was in the appropriation before it got cut. But, you know, I just appreciate your guys' time. You know, we, I say "we," I say Dr. Perigin and Mrs. Jones. I don't know the hours that they put into this. But that being said, I don't see, I don't see the city building a school, you know, within the next 10 years if we don't go through with this type of a process. We've met before, and, you know, we've been said, you know, we don't count on anything we don't have. And that's exactly what we're doing here. We're not counting on anything we don't have. You know, there could be some windfalls coming, but we don't know that. It could be some good projects coming, but we don't know that. You know, I do agree with what Mr. Hartley said pertaining to Mr. Wingard's comments about every department needs, needs a lot. This is one that you can fix without having to spend any money to do it. As far as maintenance costs, you know, we got a maintenance budget now, and those maintenance costs, I don't see whether it would increase. We're going from three buildings to one. You know, put appropriations for capital projects, you know, capital updates, we already do that. We've got a building that was built in 1938. How can, how can we be accused of not taking care of our buildings? This school board, our previous school boards have done that, or those buildings will not be in use today. And I would also like to say, you know, seven years ago, Highland View was functionally obsolete. There's going to have to be some decisions made about, you know, if this, if this doesn't go, if we don't go through with this, there will be some hard decisions that have to be made about Highland View and what we're going to do with our students. And with that being said, you know, this isn't final tonight. This just lets us see what the interest rate is and what the payment's going to be. I've been on this, this school board for eight years, and we have never asked for an exorbitant amount of money. We just have asked for money that we can operate on. You know, we've tried to take care of our teachers every year. As far as raises, we've changed pay scale to try to be competitive, but we have never asked for an exorbitant amount of money. We know the condition of our city. So if we move forward, if you give us the permission to move forward tonight, it's not like it's a done deal. I mean, we've still got to see what the financing is, and we know what we can afford as a school system without having to come back to you and ask for additional monies. So, you know, I would just ask you to, we have been very frugal with our money, and how we spend it, and what we spend it on, get the most bang for our buck, and that's exactly what we intend to do with this project. And if it comes back, the financing, interest rates have gone too high, we're not going to do it. We're not going to do it. We know what we can afford, and we know we can't come back, ask for more money. We're not going to do that. We gave you our word that we wouldn't do that, and that's not, if there's one thing I am, I'm man of my word. If I tell you I'm not going to do it, I'm not. So, you know, that's kind of where we're at, that's the way that I see it. All we're asking is a, is an approval to go forward and see what the interest rate is, and go from there.
I'd like to say thank you to all the council. I think this has been a very educational, not just for myself, but everybody in Bristol. I didn't vote for Mr. Wingard, but I've got a lot of respect for him, and I've learned a lot from him this past six or nine months. And I think a lot of people in Bristol have learned about the state of Bristol and the financial matters that we're faced with. With that, I feel like that we owe it to our kids to have a safe learning environment, to be free of asbestos, to be able to breathe clean air, to be able to go outside of their school, and have a safe place to be dropped off and picked up. I think our kids have to have the same opportunity to learn, and it's not fair to live in one section or one street and not have the same opportunity. I don't think that we as a city will ever be able to build a new school if we don't take advantage of this type of financing. If we don't take advantage of this type of financing, I don't think we'll build a school in my lifetime. Anytime a community has an opportunity to build a new school, they need to do it. If we do not build a new school, I feel, I feel like we'll continue to see citizens of Bristol, Virginia leave. Honestly believe that. I see it in my neighborhood now. If we do build a new school, I think we have the opportunity to retain and attract new citizens, and that's our revenue. Thank you.
My name's Ronald Cameron. I'm a member of the school board and the city resident city. I'm not going to repeat, you know, we've documented, you guys got the data, you got the numbers. Nobody's arguing we need new school. Is it ideal location? We agree it's not, but, but it's, it works, and it's needed. And in this city, I thank everybody that's been involved in it, the city council and the school board, and the contractors, and everybody that's looked at this. I'm in my 15th year on this school board, and it was a, it was a battle back when, when we were trying to, you know, state our need for a new school board office. And it was, nobody thought we, you know, there was a lot of unknowns, and we pushed through and got that done. And I get, I get that when we start talking about closing schools, it's one of the most emotional things a community can go through. I get it. And, and I appreciate the passion and everything from the parents, but you got to look through everything and come to what's important and what's needed in this community. And we need a new school. We need, our kids need it, our parents need it, our staff need it. Our staff, if they're great at Highland View, they're going to be great at a new school. Our staff's not going to change. Everybody's bragged about our teachers, and rightly so. We got a great staff who go above and beyond every day. They will go above and beyond right there for our kids, whether they're, it don't matter what walls they're in. We're gonna, our staff's going to meet the needs of our kids, and we are not going to lose a lot of teachers over this. I can promise you. We have looked at this, the school board has studied this for years. It's nothing that we just pulled out of a hat. We have looked at all aspects and all angles of this, and I just ask, I'm not going to repeat everything or go on, I just ask that this city have the courage and the confidence in us to make the right decision on this. We have studied this, we know this is what we need, and it's, it takes courage to have vision. And this vision for the future of this city rests on what we're talking about tonight. It's a big deal, and it's a big decision. Thank you.
I'm not going to say a whole lot more because basically it's already been said, but I want to thank the council, mayor, vice mayor, for your diligence in letting us even attempt to go out and find some type of funding to even make this look like a reality. I also want to thank the constituents of the city of Bristol for, for their passion and their concerns, and I understand that. I guess my biggest complaint about this, I've been on the board since 2008, because I'm a lifelong resident of Bristol, and I went to the neighborhood schools. I was born and raised here, so I know what the neighborhood schools are all about. When we start talking about building this new school up on the same property as Van Pelt, I was totally set against it. I mean, nobody wants to move everybody up there to that one campus, but at that time and now, that's the only place that's available. I guess in the back of my mind, I'm wondering if there was a, property was located somewheres more centrally, if we would get more support of that, or is it just the funding? But like, a couple council members have already said that if we don't do this now and get it behind us, then with the funding that we've got with this PPEA, it's going to be almost detrimental to the city if we wait six months, eight months, one year, two years, or five years. It's going to cost the city more because, as Dr. Perigin mentioned earlier, we may not have the investors to actually want to invest in the city of Bristol, Virginia at that point, and then it's all going to fall back on the taxpayers. And I'm a taxpayer. I mean, there's no doubt that I live here because I'm elected, but I own two sets of property, not to mention other things, in the city of Bristol, Virginia. So I'm proud of my city, I'm proud of how, what we're representing, but I still believe that, as Mr. Cameron said, that our students are not going to falter any different in this new intermediate school if it comes to fruition as it would be in one of the neighborhood schools. Like I said, when I came on in 2008, we really wasn't looking at an elementary school at that point in time because we was more concerned about getting a central office built for the handicapped accessibilities. But after that was done, it wasn't long after we started talking about the two elementary model. And even before that fact was made, the reason we were looking at that, it wasn't so much as the aging buildings, even though that was what it was, but it was also to eliminate some of the cost that we had to ask for from the city. So with that being said, I appreciate you listening to the school board's proposal. I appreciate Dr. Perigin and Ms. Jones and her team for their hard work and dedication. And like I said, one way or the other, Bristol is going to go on.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clear a couple misconceptions. Mr. Wingard, you had mentioned that you can't see an avenue to guarantee level funding. You know, the vote tonight will determine either whether we receive level funding in the future, or we'll have to ask for increased funding, because we cannot stay in our current dilapidated buildings without putting a significant Band-Aid investment into it. So if you vote no tonight, know that you're going to have to invest more money into it to make the repairs so that we can keep kids in those schools. We've kept a roof on Highland View since 1938. We have a sufficient budget to take care of those needs, and we have, or we wouldn't be in a building that's 81 years old. You said that we can only look at needs. If a school being deemed functionally obsolete does not meet the criteria for a need, I don't know what will. And then, Mr. Farnham, you had mentioned that there's fear about teachers not having their jobs. Well, we're cutting our class sizes so close, the standards of quality of the state of Virginia says that you have to have X number of teachers for this number of students. You have to keep class sizes at this level to get this funding. There's not going to be any additional cuts in teachers, so that's a misconception completely. So if that's what you're basing your vote on, that's a misconception. We cannot reduce any additional staff other than the ones that we have because we're required to keep staffing levels at a certain level, not by the city of Bristol, but by the Commonwealth of Virginia.
All right, with that, any other council discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Farnham?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Mumpower?
No.
With that, city council is convened. Adjourned.